... meeting in the Hammond Common Council order for Monday, December 12th.
I ask that we have a moment of silence for Clyde Stout, our fourth district supervisor. Thank you.
Darrell Rokaw.
Alexander.
Present.
Spatali.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Calwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Rakos.
Here.
Warple.
Here. Let the record show nine present, zero absent. All nine are in chambers. Mayor?
Hi. Thanks, Council. It's good to see you for my first address of December. I know you have third and final reading on the heavy truck ordinance today. Obviously, the city administration supports that ordinance and hope for its passage. We are working on a progress, a process right now. I know the council's heard this before, but just in case for the people that weren't paying attention to last council meeting, a color-coded system to make it easier on the truck drivers that are driving through our city, as well as on the police officers that are ticketing these truck drivers driving through our city, to make it completely apparent when you're on the truck route and when you're no longer on the truck route. It's a color-coded system. We're working on the signage right now. We're literally talking about thousands of signs we're going to hang throughout the city of Hammond to make it apparent when you're on this, when you're on the heavy truck route and when you're not on the heavy truck route. So, we're working on that, and I appreciate the council for working together with the administration to help pass fire, higher fines for the semi-drivers that are off the route. We think this ordinance goes part and parcel to what we're doing with the, the color-coded system, so thank you for considering that. I know also up on third and final today is the city-issued ID cards. This is another administration ordinance that we hope that you pass. We've seen these city-issued IDs in other cities across Indiana. They particularly help non-documented parts of our population, as well as seniors or kids that don't have driver's licenses, anybody where it's harder to get a driver's license. There's a municipal-issued ID that will help them in the city of Hammond. Could help anywhere else if they want to see a government ID. It doesn't have the power that driver's license does. It doesn't give you the chance, the opportunity to drive a car, but it can help you prove your residence, and people will take advantage of this. We've already talked to Clerk Golick, and the clerk's office is going to assume responsibility for this program, presuming that it's approved by the council. So, I know Clerk Golick was excited about it. We're excited about it as well, and I anticipate the council supports this also. It didn't seem like it was very controversial when it went through first and fi, um, first and second reading, so thank you for that. Also, on ARP 2.0, you guys are going through ARP 2.0. Real quick, ARP 2.0 is finishing the Robertsdale Led remediation project with another $1.5 million. Repurposing Firehouse Number Two money from the use of ARP money. We're going to pay for Firehouse Two, which is located in the Robertsdale part of our city, with another mechanism, sort of how we paid the firehouse in Hessville. We want to do a proposal similar to what we did in Hessville, and originally, we planned to use ARP money to finish that, so we backed that money out of the project, and we're going to pay for that another way. Downtown Hammond reconstruction, which is second and the third district, $1.6 million extra to finish that project. That's the infrastructure project going on in downtown Hammond. $1.8 million extra for the new Calumet Avenue pedestrian bridge. It's located between Munster and Hammond in our fourth district. $1.3 million extra for the reconstruction of J.F. Mahoney Drive. Yeah. Didn't we back that out? Councilwoman Warple?
No, that was Oxbow.
Oxbow, excuse me. Okay. For J.F. Mahoney Dr, I'm, I'm sorry. You're right. $1.3 million extra for the reconstruction of J.F. Mahoney Drive, $400,000 extra, uh, extra for the local match for the new Hessville Bridge to get residents over the constantly stopped rail traffic. It's located in the fifth and the sixth district. $1.5 million extra for Kennedy Avenue reconstruction in downtown Hessville. The project is occurring between, basically, Freddie Steakhouse and 169th. Very happy to say, uh, duh, 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 $2.1 million for Memorial Park infrastructure. We've worked with Councilman Berry on including that as well, and I'm happy to report, Councilwoman Warple, that we got $1.0 million from indot funding through the Community Crossings Match Grant, which is 50% state, 50% Hammond funds, and we're going to use that money to reconstruct and resurface 177th Street, which is east of Carlson Drive and Buffalo Wild Wings. So, anyway, that's, uh, an update from there. Just to give you an idea of what we've been doing city-side over the last couple of weeks since we last spoke. We're in the process of going through a reorganization in the Public Works Department. As the council is aware, Gary Gleason, Johnny Perez, the top two in the Public Works Department, along with three of the district supervisors, took the buyout. I appreciate Councilwoman Katrina for recognizing Clyde Stout, who tragically passed away last week after accepting the buyout and finally retiring from the city of Hammond. He was a veteran, a Marine. He worked for our city for better part of three decades and tragically died last week. He's been battling cancer, which is why he wanted to retire. It's very, very sad. But, to get back to the larger point, we are going through a major change in leadership at Public Works. The top two spots, Gary Gleason and Johnny Perez, we've decided to replace, first off, the process we went through before we made any decisions. Besides the knowledge I had being mayor for the last 20 years, besides the knowledge Phil Taylor's had as being chief of staff, we talked to Gary Gleason and Johnny Perez, obviously, the outgoing bosses, about who they thought should take over for him, and we talked to every employee in Public Works. Every employee in Public Works, and we took their advice, and we compiled all those notes, and we came up with Felix Gonzalez, who's an excellent young man. He has an opportunity, if he does his job the right way, to be in there a long time. He's excellent. He's in supervision already. We've agreed to tap him to be our new Public Works Supervisor, and the number two in Public Works is going to be Rhonda Dowd, who is obviously a female. It's very unusual to have a female on this position. It's something I'm very proud of. Rhonda has been an excellent office manager in Public Works, so much so that she actually got her CDL and started driving routes. Actually, I don't think she has CDL, but she drives routes and plows snow, but she does it in the smaller trucks, so she doesn't have to do it with the CDL. She's been doing this for years, and she's an asset as far as on the streets as well. She knows so much about Public Works. We thought it was appropriate for her. I thought she was going to end up in a district, and as it turns out, based on all of our interviews, she ended up taking over as number two. So, we have a young man, 33-year-old man, running around, and a young woman running in Public Works. I think that's pretty cool. Both Hammond residents, obviously. We still have three open supervisor spots. Now that we have our leadership team assembled, we're going to start filling the leadership spots very shortly. Obviously, I'll be in contact with the district councilmen about your spots that are open. Right now, three, four, and six are open. So, we gave the other current supervisors opportunity to change districts if they wanted to. I think they all wanted to stay put, so we'll be filling three, four, and six, and I'll be in touch down the road on that. Also, I had a community meeting in Clark High School, uh, excuse me, in Robertsdale regarding the Clark High School fields, the housing development project that we're holding. The meeting was around 100 people or so. It was around a two-hour meeting. It was very productive. I thought it was really one of the best meetings we've had in a long time. I walked in, and I felt one way, and we weren't set in stone, which is why we wanted to meet with the community. I walked in thinking I wanted one version, and I walked out. All of us were convinced that there was another version. It was better. It was literally, I thought it was a really productive meeting. So, we're moving forward with that project. We've got the money set aside for that in ARP. We're excited about that. There's going to be a lot of green space and a lot of nice houses. If you're interested in building a new house, I'd suggest you hold off and look at what we're doing in Robertsdale, right across from the Festival of the Lakes ground. We held our holiday party and our holiday parade. Things went really well at the holiday parade. I appreciate the council and my special events team for putting it together. Holiday party was excellent. I know a lot of the councilmen were there. The only thing that conflicted with our holiday parade was the U.S. versus Netherlands game. We still had a decent crowd, even though it was a big game happening simultaneously. And last but not least, I'm sure you are aware that there was a large verdict entered against the city of Hammond from a case that emanated from 1981, crime that occurred in our city. Obviously, we're very aware of what's going on with this case. I've been talking to a lot of lawyers lately. I want to remind the council that we had a case similar to this years ago, where there was a large verdict entered against the city, and we ended up negotiating for a much smaller amount. I'd like the council to know that we have excellent attorneys representing the city. We don't agree with the verdict against the city. We are going to appeal this verdict, and I will keep you informed. If you want to get into real details, obviously, I can keep you in the loop. Kevin and I can meet with you, but we can't do it on the record as we're doing right now. It's a large verdict that was entered against the city. If you'll notice, it was right around $25 million verdict. That's obviously very large, something we don't agree with, and we are appealing and doing everything we can to defend the city. I want to point out that I was 11 years old when this occurred. Obviously, that was a long time ago for all of us. Some of us might not, some of us weren't even born at that time, and we're defending a case that happened a long time ago, but we have great lawyers representing the city, and we're going to get great lawyers representing us on the appeal as well. It's a very serious matter, and we're taking it very seriously. And, you know, obviously, you all know I'm, I'm an attorney. I think this is when it pays to have an attorney for a mayor, because this is a very serious matter. So, I'm sorry for the long report, but we've been very busy, as you can imagine. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer. Yes, sir.
Councilman Kowinski.
Thank you. Mayor, on the municipal ID card, are there age restrictions to it, or can parents bring their children in and get that card?
This is an excellent question. I don't see why there would be age restrictions.
And some kids have school ID, but some, some kids may not.
Because it's not a driver's license, so I don't see why there would be age restrictions. That's a, that's a great question. I, yeah, I, I don't see why we would have age restriction. There's a reason why.
Not in the ordinance, so that's.
Agree. I mean, so as far as I'm concerned.
Anybody?
Yeah, as long as you could prove this kid is actually who that person is, and that's where they live. So, thank you. Great question.
Court of Counsel, do you read it the same way?
I agree.
Thanks. Questions? Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks for everything you're doing, and I'll be here if you need anything. Thanks.
Thank you.
Item number four, approval of minutes.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
Make a motion to accept the minutes from November 28, 2022. You place on file, please.
Second. Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Item number five, approval of claims.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
Make motion to approve claims dated 12/5/2022 and ending with claims dated 12/7/2022. Claim number 7165 through claim number 7390, amount $2,776,467.75.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Darrell Rokaw.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. Item number six, public hearings.
Ordinance 2249, sponsored by Councilman Spitali, in ordinance to further appropriate from the ARPA Coronavirus Local Physical Recovery Fund for purposes that fulfill the intent of the American Rescue Plan Act.
Want to go ahead and read the other one?
In ordinance to appropriate unspent monies into the 2022 American Rescue Plan Fund 2410 from 2021 previously appropriated American Rescue Plan Funds.
Does anybody wish to speak on either one of these issues? Does anybody wish to speak on either one of these issues? Does anybody wish to speak on their, on either one of these issues? Seeing nobody, public hearing is now closed. Item number seven, communications. Anybody have any communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
Uh, I just want to extend my condolences to the family of Mr. Leroy Harwell as well. Uh, he passed away over the weekend, or end of last week, and there will be a memorial service tomorrow, not tomorrow, sorry, Wednesday evening at New Hope Two. Mr. Harwell was a longtime educator and coach within our city, so I know he impacted a ton of lives, people across the entire city. So, there's more information on Facebook if you would like to attend a memorial. Thanks.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
Um, the mayor alluded to this earlier in his report. Clyde Stout was the fourth district supervisor, and we, I knew him, and we talked, and he also was a combat engineer like myself, so we had that in common, and he will be missed, and he was always riding around the fourth, and the city, for that matter, but we will miss him, and condolences to his family.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on their communications? Does anybody else have anything on the communications?
Mr. President.
Tyler.
Uh, just one last thing. We're still collecting toys for our giveaway, which will take place on Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Hammond Civic Center, so if you would like, anybody watching or anybody in the room would like to make donations, you can still do so. You can drop those off here at City Hall, at the Civic Center, any fire station within our city, and at either Hammond Morden or Hammond Central as well. Thank you.
What was the date of that?
Uh, it's Thursday, December 14th, 15th.
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 Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the commu, communications? Does anybody else have anything on the communications? Hearing none, communications are now closed. Item number eight, committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
I'll be bringing out two ordinances, both from council as a whole, 2253 and 2254.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, yes. Council as a whole will be bringing out 2250. You want me to go through the rest of them?
Yeah, please.
Okay. Um, council as a whole will also be bringing out 2249, 2251, 2252, 2253, 2254. And then I'd like to move on to capital improvements, if I may.
Go ahead.
Uh, I have nothing to report. As capital improvements did not meet on December 5th, there was no pending business. To the best of my knowledge, the bet, the next meeting will be Monday, December 19th, 4:30 p.m. for the work-study session, and 5:00 p.m. for the meeting. Please keep an eye out. If there is no further business and notice, we'll be going out, but to the best of my knowledge, December 19th. Moving on to community and crime watch, uh, there will be, uh, no more meetings in December, and on behalf of the community and crime watch groups, I'd like to wish everyone very happy and safe holidays. The meetings will resume, one in January. That will be the Hessville Crime Watch on January 19th, beginning at 6:00 p.m. That is at the Gene Shepherd Center. The rest of the meetings will resume in February or March, so I will announce those at every meeting. As usual, if you see anything suspicious, please be sure to call 911 and, and just be safe this holiday season, because community is not just about me. It's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on their committee reports? Does anybody else have anything on their committee reports? Hearing no more committee reports. Committee reports are now closed. Item number nine, ordinance, third reading and final passage.
Ordinance 2249, sponsored by Councilman Spitali, in ordinance to further appropriate from the ARPA Coronavirus Local Physical Recovery Fund for purposes that fulfill the intent of the American Rescue Plan Act.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
Final passage of 22-49.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion?
President.
Councilman Spitali.
ARPA funds necessary for both finalized versions number one projects and move forward for version number two, the planned projects.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Darrell Rokaw.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Ordinance 2250, sponsored by Councilwoman Vines, in ordinance to appropriate unspent monies into the 2022 American Rescue Plan Fund 2410 from 2021 previously appropriated American Rescue Plan Funds.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of 2250.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, this is basically a housekeeping ordinance to move funding from 2021 to 2022 for the projects that remain unfunded just yet.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Darrell Rokaw.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Ordinance 2251, sponsored by Councilman Spitali, in ordinance creating a new fund, Fund 2472, for Justice Assistance Grant, JAG, program funds awarded to the City of Hammond Police Department.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
For final passage of 22-51.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion?
President.
Councilman Spitali.
Funds from this Justice Assistance Grant goes for personnel, equipment, supplies, and training for the police. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. Darrell Rokaw.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Ordinance 2252, in ordinance to amend ordinance 3890, 4934, 6009, 7972, 8172, 8328, 8750, and 9343, also known as Chapter 73, Section 99 of Title VIII of the Hammond Municipal Code as it pertains to penalties for violating the uniform operation of truck traffic within the city.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
Move for final passage and adoption of 2252.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilman Kowinski. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
Make motion to amend ordinance number 2252A in its entirety.
Motion's been made by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilman Kowinski. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
This is an amendment. We missed a, a ordinance that needed, that's only in the title. Ordinance number 8261 needed to be added to the title of this ordinance, so therefore we have the amendment of 8252A. I'm sorry, 2252A.
Is there any discussion on the amendment? Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Darrell, roll call on the amendment.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Now, the motion is amended. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Darrell.
Alexander.
Rokaw.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Ordinance 2253, petitioned by the Hammond Redevelopment Commission, sponsored by Councilman Torres. Ordinance amending ordinance number 9511 of the Hammond Common Council authorizing the city of Hammond, Indiana to issue one or more series of its economic development revenue bonds and approving and authorizing other actions in respect thereto for 415 Sibley Three Corners Project, Bank Calumet Northwest Indiana Project.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
I move for a final passage of 2253.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Torres, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
This is a ordinance that's in reference to the Bank Calumet 415 Sibley, which we all know is being converted from an old bank to apartment buildings, and is to update the financing of issuing bonds.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Darrell Rokaw.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Ordinance 2254, sponsored by the entire Hammond Common Council, in ordinance creating a new section known as Section Blank of the Hammond Municipal Code Establishing Municipal Identification Cards.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Move for final passage of ordinance 2254.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Torres, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
This ordinance establish municipal identification cards for immigrants who choose to live in Hammond. The municipal ID card should be accepted and recognized by city department heads, especially the Police Department for public safety issues. That's it.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Darrell Rokaw.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed.
That concludes, um, inter, um, ordinance, third and final passage.
Thank you. Moving on, item number 10, introduction of ordinances.
Ordinance 2255, sponsored by Mayor Thomas and McDermott Jr., in ordinance fixing the salaries for elected city officials for the city of Hammond, Indiana, commencing January 1st, 2023, be it ordained by the common council of the city of Hammond, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for first and second reading, refer to council as a whole with a committee meeting on December 27th at 5:15 p.m.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Ordinance 2256, sponsored by Councilwoman Vines, in ordinance authorizing the city controller to transfer funds from one line item to another within various city 2020, 2022 budgets.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for first and second reading of 2256, refer to council as a whole with a committee meeting at 5:15 p.m. on 12/27.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilwoman Alexander. Is there any discussion? Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilwoman Alexander. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, yes, this is simply moving, uh, uh, funding that was, savings that we realized, uh, and, uh, moving to the energy savings line item to be used for bonds and leases.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Mr. President, that concludes introduction of ordinances.
Thank you. Moving on to item number eleven, resolutions.
Resolution twenty-two R twenty-one, a resolution confirming the reappointment of Amanda Aguilera as a commissioner of the Hammond Historic Preservation Commission of the City of Hammond, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, I move that we approve all of these resolutions, uh, with one vote. There's twenty-two R twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven. All of these are appointments to the, or reappointments to the Historic Preservation Commission. Uh, I'll, Eric, do you want to route three of those?
Twenty-two, for the record, twenty-two R twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four are the Historical Preva, uh, Preservation Committee, and they're all reappointments. Twenty-two R twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-seven is the Hammond Human Relations Committee, and they're all reappointments.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I would like to state the names if I could, please.
Go ahead.
Uh, twenty-two R twenty-one, Amanda Aguilera, uh, this is for Historic Preservation. Twenty-two R twenty-two, reappointment of Auntie Anderson to Historic Preservation. Twenty-two R twenty-three, the reappointment of Debbie Goff to the Historic Preservation Commission. Twenty-two R twenty-four, the reappointment of Patrick Swipes to Historic Preservation Commission. Twenty-two R twenty-five, the reappointment of Gladys Hilliard to the Human Relations Commission. Twenty-two R twenty-six, the reappointment of Ronald Mullins to the Human Relations Commission. And twenty-two R twenty-seven, the reappointment of Gary Wilson to the Human Relations Commission. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there a second under motion to take these? Councilwoman, the motion's been made to take them all in a lump by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Tyler. Is there any discussion on that? Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the ayes have it. So, maintain a motion to... Vote on them now, as a whole.
Okay, uh, I move for final passage of twenty-two R twenty-one through twenty-two R twenty-seven.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Tyler. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Darrell Rokaw.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpool.
Yes, let the record show they all passed, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Mr. President, that concludes, um, resolution.
Thank you. Item number twelve, new and unfinished business. Councilman Kalwinski.
Make a motion to confirm the reappointment of Miriam Soto Presley as commissioner of the Hammond Redevelopment Commission.
Second.
That isn't a confirmation, that's an appointment.
What's that?
The, the confirmations were when the mayor made the appointment, but the council has appointments to the... Port authority.
I'll just take out the word confirm, so I'll make a motion to reappoint Miriam Soto Presley as a commissioner of the Hammond Redevelopment Commission.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Kalwinski, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kalwinski.
Ms. Presley has been a, uh, commissioner of the Hammond Redevelopment for approximately ten years, a founding participant commissioner, and also serves a case as a translator as necessary when that comes up in a commission meeting.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Darrell, roll call on the motion.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpool.
Yes, let the record show nine in favor, zero opposed. Anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
I just wanted to thank, uh, the mayor for pushing ordinance twenty-two fifty-four. He actually, him and the city councilor actually wrote it, I just sponsored it.
He didn't, he gave us a chance to sign up.
But it, he brought it to my attention when I told him about the resolution for the state's ID cards, so it's a good idea, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
I'd like to motion to suspend the rules for twenty-two fifty-seven, and have a move for first and second reading, the meeting set with December twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-two.
Motion's been made to suspend the rules to consider an ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Nope. Darrell, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpool.
Yes. The motion to suspend the rules has passed, nine in favor, zero opposed. Now, Councilman Spitali, you want to introduce that now?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, Polan, Mr. Polan, please come to the microphone, please.
We have to introduce it again. We had to suspend the rules first.
First and second reading, the meeting set for December twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two, council as a whole at five fifteen.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion?
This is an ordinance to update and amend the existing floodplain ordinance to be, um, excuse me, compliant with the, uh, model floodplain ordinance, uh, set by this state, and adopt the, uh, incoming maps that are going to be effective in January.
Thank you. Councilman Kalwinski.
Mr. Polan, did you create this?
It's a model ordinance presented to us by the state. It was reviewed by our floodplain consultant for technical corrections, so it's... It, um, it's really technical corrections, and the only thing we, it's changing or adding is the V and the VE zones for the coastal zone, the Lake Michigan shoreline.
It's a very dry region.
It's, it's very technical.
Yes.
It is very technical, yes. But it, it's not going to affect anybody's flood insurance or any of the areas that have already been removed from the floodplain, it's more administrative functions, but it does keep us in compliance with the, the state program that allows us to have local jurisdiction.
I think it's important to note, like we did earlier, that if we don't pass this, then we're going to rescind the possibility of remaining.
Well, it would take us out of the program, the management program, yes, if we don't pass it.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? The motion's been made to pass on first and second reading and introduce it to council as a whole on December twenty-seventh at five fifteen P.M. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the ayes have it.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
Make a motion to go back to regular business.
Motion's been made to go back to new and unfinished business. Darrell, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpool.
Yes, let the record show, I'm sorry, back to new and unfinished business. Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
I just want to take the time to wish our residents a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, um, because Christmas is coming up before our next meeting, and I just hope that they have a happy holiday and, um, praying that they have not only a happy holiday, but those that are going through trials and tribulations that they find peace during this holiday season.
Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali, uh, Rakos.
Yes, I'd like to, uh, expand, express gratitude to the volunteers who came out to the area of one seventy-second, one seventy-first in Maryland to help clean up an area that was, been vandalized and, and people have, uh, taken advantage of this area that they got, uh, were able to get a lot of garbage that accumulated over many years from people that were basically, uh, in an area they had no business to be in, uh, mattresses and things like that, and appreciate they, they came out, and Bishop, no students were involved, I understand, and I'd like to, you know, H C three and myself have been, uh, doing cleanups in Hessville for about four or five years, and, um, we, we have next ones that will be coming in May and October, so maybe we can, uh, get together on that situation for Hessville. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is now closed, public expression, I see we got quite a list, so I'm going to remind everybody you have three minutes, and it'll be a hard three minutes tonight, thank you. Our first speaker is... Was it two? Gerting? T.J., I'm sorry. Sucks to get old when you can't see.
How's it going, uh, councilors, mayor, uh, fellow Hammondites, virtual? Um, my name is T.J. Gerthig. Uh, I live at Locust Street and Holman Avenue. Uh, I'm an electrician, Local Six-Ninety-seven. And I've been coming to these meetings, uh, to get more involved in the community and see what's going on, and I've, uh, really been enjoying it so far, met a couple of you, uh, so, uh, I'd like to speak today in favor of preserving the, uh, Briar East Woodland Dunes, uh, that Councilman Rakos just mentioned. Um, I was at the cleanup as well. Um, I think it's, uh, an extremely valuable asset, uh, to Hammond, and I don't think it should be, uh, developed, uh, as is, uh, being considered. So firstly, uh, parks and nature preserves are crucial for livable cities. Uh, green spaces provide free recreation for residents, and it makes the city more beautiful by breaking up suburban sprawl. I think this is especially important for Hammond because it's already pretty densely populated, as is, um, and, you know, parks are pretty far and few between. Second, uh, this space is beneficial to our local wildlife. You've heard of the recent sighting of a barred owl in these woods, and this is very important, um, because most wetlands in the Midwest are marshes which lack trees, but the Briar East Dunes is both a wetland and a forest, um, which is a little unique, and it is only in this ecosystem that you'll find the barred owl, which suffers more and more from habitat loss. This applies to many other native species to Northwest Indiana that are dying out due to new development. Lastly, I think the, uh, that we should preserve, preserve these woodland dunes because they are unique to Hammond and Northwest Indiana. Um, I'm originally from Illinois, I grew up in Illinois, and I actually didn't come to Indiana very much, um, except for two things, and that was the pierogi fest and, uh, and to go to the dunes. Just a couple weeks ago, me, me and Ann over there, we're, um, we were, we were going hiking at the Miller Woods Trail, and we met someone from out of state that came to see the dunes, not the beach, uh, they heard about the dunes and wanted to come see the dunes. And the dunes that we have here in Hessville are actually way older than the ones at Miller Beach, um, they're, they're literally ancient, um, as Ken Schoon pointed out to us, uh, a couple weeks ago. So nowadays, plenty of cities are spending millions of dollars on restoring, uh, forests and prairies that had previously been developed, but we already got one. It's easy to replant a prairie, it's hard to replant a forest, it's even harder for a wetland, but it's impossible to remake a dune. Um, this was made thousands of years ago. What you have here is an extremely unique landscape, um, unique to Hammond and Northwest Indiana, and it can easily be a tourist attraction. I already added it to Google Maps, it wasn't there before, so just let me add the signs and we'll make it a park. Thank you.
Oh, this one's going to be tough. I see Sashi, but I don't know how to spend the last, Sekar?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, council, for having me. Uh, my name is Sashi Sekar, and I'm actually from Sherrville, Indiana. Um, so I came all the way down Calumet Avenue to come to Hammond, and the reason I came here is because of the dunes. I actually grew up in Hammond, I was here until I was in third grade, um, and some of my fondest memories are of exploring and playing in Briar East Woods. My family are first, were, were first generation immigrants, and we grew up, uh, I lived in Briar East apartments, and for us, not having a lot of money and resources, being in those woods was our playground. Uh, we did not get to go on many vacations far away, we didn't get to go to national parks and state parks away where we could see nature. Our nature, luckily for me, was in my backyard. Now I'm worried that nature like that is going to be taken away, not only for me, who likes to go actually to Gibson Woods and to the dunes, but also for the kids that are growing up in this area. I know a lot of kids that go to Scott Middle School and Morton High School. Um, actually, I used to take groups of Scott Middle School kids every year for twelve years, uh, out for environmental field trips, but we had to fly them all the way out to the East Coast for that, it cost their families quite a bit of money. Now, wouldn't it be nice to see those kids growing up in nature in their backyard? That's what I'd like to see for them. Currently, um, actually, I, I've been an engineer, I was a professor at Purdue University Northwest here for over twenty-five years, but currently I work for, uh, Lincoln Park Zoo in environmental education and animal welfare research. And, um, things that I know very well is that having natural spaces and environment matter. They matter for physical, physiological, and mental health, well-being. It promotes overall quality of life, not just for children, but for all of us. There are many, many ecosystem benefits as well, okay? We know that natural spaces, um, help clean our air, our water, they block light and noise pollution, all of which has been shown to be highly detrimental to beneficial insects, birds, and other species, and importantly, to us. So, all in all, I want to say that what brought me back to Hammond was the woods. I wouldn't be here if there was an overpass there, or another subdivision, or another industrial lot. Actually, I would be, I'd be trying to move. I want to be here, and so I'm here because I really believe in wanting to improve the overall quality of life for Hammond residents and for the region as a whole. I want to see kids that are growing up here explore the woods like I did. I want to see them mentally and physically benefit. up here explore the woods like I did. I want to see them mentally and physically benefit from what the woods have to offer. I want to see them stay here and then bring their families and let them stay here.
Ma'am, your three minutes, so...
Thank you very much. I really appreciate your time.
Thank you. Ken Rosick.
Thanks a lot. I appreciate it. Greetings, everybody. Greetings, Mr. President. Greetings, council members. Mr. Rakos stole my thunder a little bit here. We organized the cleanup behind his townhomes, and the place was neglected for decades. We cleaned up a bunch of trash right behind there, and most of it was dated, you know, a decade ago. Doesn't look like anybody has touched that area for many years. This was our community. We had a coalition of four different community organizations that worked on this project. It was Hammond Community Garden. It was the Poor People's Campaign. It was Bishop Noel High School, and the Hessville Dune Dusters. We had 22 individuals, young and old, collective. We collected 27 bags of garbage and a ton of other objects. That's community involvement, right there. We are making this a nicer, more beautiful place. You've got 22 people who are spending their time coming out there and taking care of this area because they care. I don't know how else to put it. We have numerous... We have had numerous cleanups in the woods, and the woods are pretty clean now. We can take care of all that grass for you, Mr. Rakos, that's around the lake. We have experts now that work in our... Work with us cleaning and rejuvenating the forest. All of that grass around the lake that you have there, that invasive grass, we can take care of next spring, and we can replant the entire area with natives, water lilies, and help out the habitat in that area. That's what we are aiming towards. I was a little upset in that we don't have a mayor's night out in 2022. In 2020, when Mayor was running for Congress, Hessville's mayor's night out was changed three separate occasions until we got past the election day. We used to have them in August, but they didn't mess around this year. They put us in the middle of December. Now we don't get any at all in 2022. The calendar on Go Hammond's website simply stated canceled. Not until numerous residents called to complain was it changed with the rescheduled date on January 4th at Gene Shepherd Community Center. You know, has anyone seen the flyer that came with your water bill that normally has these dates? There was no mention of the rescheduling on this flyer. The only thing I see that is transparent here is the deception. We are not being listened to. We are not being allowed to have public vetting in our district. With that, I would like to wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and I'll see you next time.
Thank you. Jack Smith.
President and council, how are you? I just want to give you a little insight about myself. March 30th, 2021, as I was leaving Omni Gym, I was having a heart attack driving home. If I was to take my route home the way I usually come, I would have turned right on Kennedy... I'm sorry, turned right on 173rd to make a left on Parish. If there was a train there, I've been stuck behind that train, and I would not be here today to tell you what was going on. But during that time, I was having an argument with my wife as she was trying to keep me conscious because I kept going in and out. As I turned... As I went down Kennedy Avenue and went to 169th, I turned right to go to my house, and well, guess what? There was a train sitting on those railroad tracks. By the time I got to my house, that ambulance was sitting there waiting for me to get home. I'm just thankful for the Hammond Fire Department that was there to get me to the hospital to where I went to St. Catherine's. That's what I got to say. I am in favor for the bridge to be built. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Mickey.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman, our mayor.
Thank you. Under Hammond City ordinance, for those that aren't aware, I have the ability to intervene, and I just want to clarify something that was said by Ken that I think was unfair. First off, mayor's night out scheduled a year in advance. We assume when I schedule six meetings across the city. First off, in Indiana, I bet you there's two mayors that do mayor's night out. I'm one of them, okay? I've been doing it for 20 years. I used to do 12 a year, then we cut back to six a year. Sometimes stuff comes up, and I have to reschedule. I was at the last council meeting. Something came up. By the way, around the same time I announced this to the council, I didn't want to get into detail, but we just had a $25 million verdict entered against the city at that time, and I needed to talk to some people about what was going on, and I felt like mayor's night out could be bounced back to January. So in 2023, we're going to do two mayor's nights out in the sixth district, Councilman Rakos. We're going to do the leftover 2022-1, and then we're going to come back around for the regularly scheduled 2023-1. I wanted to make that clear, okay? So, to the residents of Hessville, I love you. I drive through Hessville every single day of my life. I live right next to it, and I care a lot about Hessville, so I don't want anybody in Hessville thinking we're canceling mayor's night out because we don't care for them. That's not true at all. Secondly, the reason I support the bridge project is not because I hate Mother Nature. I don't hate the dunes. I don't hate going on hikes. I love going on hikes. I go on hikes all the time. I'm outdoors more than almost anybody I know. So I pulled up, funny enough, I was on Apple Maps just flipping through when I was here, and people talked bad about me, and I said, "I'm going to pull up Parish Avenue," because I wanted to look overhead at the area we're talking about, where the bridge is going to go. And as I pulled it up on Apple Maps, you can pull it up yourself, I got the latest version, I pulled in on Parish Avenue. And funny enough, on Apple Maps, the satellite shot of Parish Avenue has a stopped freaking train sitting there blocking Parish Avenue. That wasn't moving. That was parked there. That's what happens to the residents that don't live in Hessville. These trains will park... It was only blocking Parish here, but it usually blocks Parish and everything east of Parish, and will sit there for four, five hours, not even moving. That's what this is about. This isn't about Mother Nature. This isn't about hating the dunes. This is about the number one problem in the city of Hammond is blocked trains, in my opinion. Well, Carham is a close second and reciprocity, but we have a lot of problems. I get constant complaints about trains, especially from the residents of Hessville. If I have an opportunity to pay for a bridge that gets us over this perpetual problem at somebody else's cost, which is what we're doing, the state's paying for 75% of this bridge, I would be negligent as your mayor if I didn't take advantage of that. So, that's what this is about. This is not a hating on Mother Nature. This is not we hate Hessville. This is about being a busy mayor, doing my job. This is about taking advantage of a state that wants to pay for a bridge to get us over this problem so that people like Jack Smith don't have a heart attack and die in their house because there's a stopped train blocking all the exits to a hospital. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Excuse me. Mayor, when is mayor's night out?
It got rescheduled to January 4th, Councilwoman. Yeah, we bounced it back two weeks.
Exactly.
And I do have, between what's going on with our hospital, what's going on with the lawsuit that stemmed from 1981, I have a couple of things going on besides normal holidays. So we felt like, hey, let's just bounce this back two weeks. If people want to protest, they can protest on January 4th just effectively as they could have protested this week. So, I love residents of Hessville, always have, always will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kelly.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, forgive me. I'm a little nervous to talk. It's not something that I generally do. However, I'm very active in the community. I pay attention. This is my first council meeting in like maybe 20 years, but I listen a lot. I'm always watching on Go Hammond, and it's very frustrating to hear negative things about the city all the time. Granted, you have to hear them, but not everything is negative. While I understand the passion and the commitment to the area that everybody is feeling upset that's being destroyed, I get that. I get it. However, I've been a Hammond resident for 49 years. I've been a Hammond employee for 24. I've lived in Hessville for 15. I would have never, ever understood the train issue had I not worked Car 6, Car 7, and Car 8. When somebody calls for help and you can't get to them because there's a train, it's difficult. It's difficult on your spirit. It's difficult on your soul. Then when you get there and people don't understand why you took so long to get there while their loved one was injured either in a car accident, or their father is dying of brain cancer, and he's become violent, and he's torn up the house and injured people, it's frustrating. I see a simple solution of a bridge. I live in the city of Hammond, and I work in the city of Hammond, and sometimes it takes me 35 to 45 minutes to get from Hessville to downtown Hammond. I'm in favor of the bridge, and I came here today to say that more people that are in favor of things like this and the good things are happening also have to come and speak up and let their voices be heard so that you understand the significance of the positive things that need to happen to move forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Michelle.
Good evening, everyone. That's a tough act to follow, but proud to say that's my wife. I wanted to... I'm an environmental scientist, and I wanted to shed some light on some of the environmental regulations that surround this whole project that have yet to be brought up. I've been to every mayor's night out. I've heard Ken speak numerous times and his whole posse of accusing everyone of hating nature, but there are federal funds involved in this project. There are state funds involved in this project, and therefore there's a whole lot of things that have to be vetted. Endangered species study, environmental impact statement, a wetland delineation, a jurisdictional determination from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and if it is in fact a regulated wetland, then they have to have a permit, and then they have to discuss wetland mitigation, which is generally a one-for-one proposal. And wetland mitigation is about $40,000 to $80,000 an acre. The city will have to do that. It's not negotiable. These are the federal and state regulations that are required for this project. So no one hates Mother Nature. We just have to be practical. I went to the grocery store yesterday, and there was a train blocking from Kennedy Avenue all the way to Burr. I had to get on Klein to get back to my house in Hessville. What about the fossil fuel impacts? What about climate change of people trying to go around these trains constantly? Is that a factor that we should consider? Build the bridge.
Thank you. George. Linda, you didn't phonetically put it out, and I'd screw it up anyway, so Linda.
Anguiano.
Anguiano?
Oh, my God.
I got it right without looking at it.
The notes, yes. Okay, I lost my stopwatch. I'm Linda Anguiano, raised in Hammond, spent a lot of my childhood in the woods that were cut down to build Morton, that were cut down. My favorite tree was where Scott Middle School is now. There's a big impact on the environment. I have had to rush my parents to the hospital to different appointments, and I have been inconvenienced with trains. But there was not any kind of public meeting, public hearing. I didn't hear Scott Rakos campaigning on this issue when he was running last time, whatever he said last time, whenever that was. I think that there can be a win-win situation. Right here, next door, in Munster, there's an underpass. In West Lafayette, they won an award for an underpass. An underpass doesn't take up all the space of a long bridge, and this particular plan, this particular plan makes it a hardship. It really makes it a hardship for kids who are walking from Morton or walking from Scott Middle School. How are they supposed to get all the way over to the Hess school area? It is not a win-win situation right now. I think that it's great that we got the federal funding, but we weren't asked about this beforehand. You have a lot of people who have a lot of environmental toxically induced conditions because of being so close to the steel mills and the factories and whatever that meat processing place was on Indianapolis near 165th. I grew up with horrible smells. I think that we need a win-win, and an underpass wouldn't cost nearly the millions of dollars, and it wouldn't destroy nearly the amount of acres, and I think that you're going to have more and more people getting more and more vocal about saving these woodland dunes if you don't do something that takes into account their feelings. And that survey that went out, my mom never even saw it. My dad just mailed it off. He didn't even tell her how he voted. Some houses got four. Our house got one. So I just think that we need to go back to the drawing board. Just... I know, it's federal funds. I lived in DC for 27 years. I'm very familiar with a lot of these kind of deals. Just go back, make everybody as happy as possible, and happy holidays, everybody.
Mayor.
Just so we're on the same page about if we went back to the drawing board, and we went back and we wanted to make a tunnel, it's not going to be cheaper. It's going to be more expensive. We will go back to the very beginning if we get approved for the federal funds. It'll be a decade added to the project, a decade of stopped trains, a decade of phone calls, a decade of inaction. That's what we're talking about. If we punt on this, Munster, or Dyer, or one of our neighbors will gobble that money up and laugh in our face and be happy about it, and they're not going to be sad that Hammond passed up free money. They're going to be happy that Hammond passed up free money, and we'll go back to the beginning of the drawing board and we'll say, "Hey, we want to have a tunnel instead," and they'll say, "Get the hell out of our office. We'll talk to you in a decade." That's what'll happen. And then I'll have to face the voters, Councilman Rakos will have to face the voters, and explain why we had a bridge completely funded, and we said, "Nope, sorry. We wanted a tunnel." I'm running on this. This is my issue. If the residents of Hessville vote me out, God bless them, they could kill this deal, okay? This is so... Such a no-brainer. I'm going to campaign on it, and I'm going to give everybody their opportunity to vote me out on this issue, because this is a no-brainer. And if we're going to start, if I have to talk to 81,000 residents every time I have to make a difficult decision, Hammond will never, ever, ever, ever move forward. If I have to talk to 81,000 people before I can make a tough decision, this job is impossible. So, and by the way, the council, you've already dealt with this issue, as have I. We've already voted. This is a state job. This is in the state ball court right now unless we pull the plug. We can pull the plug. We pull the plug, this project is dead. Congratulations, Hessville. Stopped trains for a decade. That's what we're talking about.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Do you want to speak, Karen?
No.
I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everybody.